Welcome all to the City of Daly City Regular Meeting for Recreation Commission. Tuesday, March twenty second, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. Visit Daly City's virtual meeting website to register to attend the virtual media meeting via Zoom. Watch the live stream of the meeting and view the agenda at H T T P S colon slash slash it dot Lee slash D C M A R twenty-two. Covid nineteen announcements for public meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order, order and twenty-nine twenty. Members of Daly City Recreation Commission and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch, uh, to watch the meeting via live stream. City Council meeting via live, uh, meeting live stream at, uh, the link H T T P S colon slash slash bit dot Lee slash D C M A R twenty-two. Public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. One, send written comment by two P M on meeting day and two, register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. To submit a comment in writing, please email active at daily city dot org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M will be emailed to the Recreation Commission members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four P M will be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission members for the public meeting. Comments are not to be read aloud into the record. To speak at this meeting, at the meeting, you must register to join via Zoom. The city requests that you complete your registration by five P M on the meeting day. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing instructions on how to join the meeting, including a unique link, your address and your email will not be disclosed to the public. Public comment is limited to two minutes max. To register to speak, uh, at the Zoom meeting, uh, visit the link H T T P S colon slash slash bit dot Lee slash D C M A R twenty-two. You must familiarize yourself with Zoom prior to joining the meeting. When you would like to speak on an item during the meeting comment, uh, during the public comment portion of the meeting, you will need to raise your, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. The city will not be providing any technical support. If you do not wish to speak, the city requests that you watch the live stream of the meeting on the city's virtual website. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call this, uh, Office of the City Clerk, um, at nine nine one eight zero seven eight as soon as possible. Uh, availability of public records, all public records, uh, all public records to an open session item on this agenda, which are not exempt from disclosure pursuant to the California Public Records Act, um, that are distributed to a majority of the legislative body will be available for public inspection at City Clerk's Office, City Hall, located at three 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 Ninety Street, Daly City, California. During normal business hours at the same time that the public records are distributed or made available to the legislative body. Okay, so I would like to call the order and start with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to its liberty and justice for all. Moving forward to roll call.
Chair Ortiz.
Here.
Vice Chair Luna.
Here.
Commissioner Peniza.
Here.
Commissioner Anoy.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Hey, thank you Denise, uh, moving forward to approving the agenda, um, may I have a motion to approve the agenda from last week? Or sorry, yeah, a motion to approve the agenda this week.
I put in a motion to approve the agenda.
And do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, moving forward to approve the minutes, uh, do I have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
I motion to, uh, approve last week's or last month's meeting minutes.
And do I have a second?
I second that, please.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Awesome, already, uh, moving on to director's report.
Thank you Commissioner Ortiz, excuse me, thank you Chair Ortiz. So tonight we have a special guest Gina Meganini and Brian Si. They are both out of the Memorial Community Center, um, and Gina not only does that, but she also does the after-school youth recreation program, the youth, um, youth, it's a new internship program with Brian Si and Brian, um, as you're aware from last month, he oversees the G M O N A pool with support of Chris Mariano, so I'm gonna turn it over to Gina.
And, and on cue, my dogs are barking, can you give me one second, I'm just gonna put them outside. Sorry, I put one outside, the other one seems to be already asleep, so we're good to go. Hi, everybody, how's it going? I see new faces, new names, so, uh, my name is Gina, as Denise said, and I'm here with Brian Si. Uh, we are both at, um, there he is, hi. We're both at War Memorial Community Center, uh, coordinating program, and we're also, um, partnering together for a new program that I'll talk about at the end of our little presentation. Um, has everybody been to the War Memorial Community Center? Yes, okay, good, hands, so, um, for the most part, you guys will, you, you know the space, hopefully, it does have the potential to have three classrooms, it has a conference room, a computer lab, a library and two gymnasiums. Um, coming out of Covid, it was very difficult to get people back in, um, but we've tried really, really hard to kind of, um, recruit, uh, per se, because everything was a drop-in and nobody, everyone would come in and they'd enjoy the program before Covid, but we didn't know their names, we didn't know their, their addresses, um, so moving forward into our pre or post-Covid, or we're kind of still in it, but, um, we have more information from them, their names, their emails, so we're able to reach a lot more of them now. Um, so I want you to know that going forward, when you're seeing the numbers that I'm speaking of, these are all new numbers to our system, which is great, and it took, uh, it took a while to get there, so now we're almost eight months in, um, but it, it was a rough couple of months to open those doors and, and to have nobody in there, and if you've been there, it's pretty eerie if you don't hear anybody else other than yourself, so. Knowing that, I'm gonna share my screen, I'm one of the co-hosts, correct? Okay, let me see. We could see. Yeah, thumbs up for my after-school kids, thank you. Um, so as I said, we are at the War Memorial Community Center, it's, uh, located on Mission Street on the east side of Daly City. Um, this is the front door is what we call it, this is that picture that you're seeing, that is the Mission's, uh, side entrance. We do have another door that opens on Hillside, which if you've been there, you probably parked there because there's a parking lot. So today we're gonna talk about a few things, um, number one, we're gonna talk about the active adult senior services and the programs that we have there. We're also gonna talk about the adult programming, so, um, those are not our seniors, but some of them do fall into that bracket as well, and then our in adult enrichment, so at this time, due to the Covid precautions, we don't have youth programming in the building in the community center portion. The library is open for youth programming and we are hoping that we are gonna be able to get there at some point, uh, soon, uh, but as of right now, uh, we're sticking to the adult programs until we get to summer. I'm also gonna show some, uh, some short videos regarding, um, some events that we had previously through the pandemic. So that's a Veterans Day, Turkey Giveaway and Memorial Day. Now those, the Veterans Day and the Memorial Day, um, are new programs or events for the City of Daly City, and they've been housed at the War Memorial because we do partner with the V F W Post eighty-seven fifty. Um, with that being said, we also have a beautiful monument in front of the War Memorial, so if you've been there, you've seen it on Mission Street. Um, so when you're, when you see that, the events were closed to the community due to Covid precautions, but you will see that it is outside and we are, um, being safe. Uh, teen programming going into the later part with, um, with Brian and I, the job readiness workshop, and then also the teen internship we'll cover at the end. So the next slide will have a video, I will say that the, the video is pre-Covid, and one of the programs that you'll see is a fan sword dancing class, and that is currently not being offered, but everything else in that video is being offered now. So that was a, an old video, like I said, um, and I will, I think there was some, um, some basketball in there, that was a previous program that we offered with, which was Milo Academy, um, but that, the, all those programs are currently running again, it just looks a little bit different coming outside of Covid. Um, so reiterating, we open our doors in September, everything is online, um, registration, so every activity that we have in the program, they have to register online or they do a paper-based registration, but we do take attendance daily for every activity, and then the hours of operation, and, and I think, um, this is really nice to see as you see our different programs, uh, we're, we're almost at seven, plus seventy-five hours per week because we do offer the Saturday and Sunday options, and our library just actually opened five days a week to help support our program. So since you know the building, when people come into the library, they tend to walk downstairs. So being able to see different programs and having that option, I think is really important, and then also vice versa, when they come into our building and they're gonna see our programs, then we could go up and they could see the library. Does anybody have any questions so far, or we're, we're okay? Okay. So this is one of our, um, active adult senior classes, this is a low-impact aerobics class, and this is actually, this, this picture was taken on Monday, I think I took it, they weren't happy about me taking a picture, but, um, this is a self-propelled class, so this is actually a video. And I will say that this video was there long before me, I've only been there for five years, but these people love this video. They could walk two and a half miles, there's stretching, there's meditation, there's, um, breathing exercises, and they love it. So that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, this is a free program for our active seniors, and you could see, um, a good mix of people there. We usually tend to have fifteen to twenty, pre-Covid, we, we had up to thirty-five to forty in there, uh, but it's slowly getting back to the comfortability of people coming into the building, number one, and then them knowing that it's open, so, um, on both fronts, but we're, we're getting there. The next one is Soul Line, um, so it's exactly what it sounds like, it is line dancing to soul music, and it is amazing. My office actually butts up to this gym, and I always have my door open, they're, they're playing Pitbull, they're playing Ray Charles, they're playing everything, so, um, and that's Dar in front is the instructor, and, um, it, this is a two-hour class, and actually just this past Monday, because they're on Mondays, uh, one of my staff members went in there and tried to do it, and he's young, he's like twenty-four, and he came back to my office, he's dripping with sweat, he was like, how do they do that? I don't know, so yes, it's Soul Line Dance, and it doesn't seem, uh, with the name of it, but it's definitely workout, and we have a very, uh, committed group of people that register for that class, and that's a contracted class with the city. Now, the last one that I want to talk about, and I apologize, I don't have an, uh, actual picture of the class, um, but this says it all. This is Hawaiian Hula, and this is our instructor Millie, and she actually lives two blocks from War Memorial. Um, I found her on a whim, um, using an app five years ago and wanted to see if she wanted to run programs there, and she does programs every Friday, and she also has a very steady, um, group of people that come to her class, but she also does competitions and performances, um, so our event coming up on April twenty-third, uh, both of the instructors, Dar, which was Soul Line Dance, and Millie will be there in attendance, um, presenting, so this is Millie, but she does have a class, this is just a picture I got of her. So, um, the next thing I want to talk about is more of the adult programming, so we're going kind of more into a different demographic. So this, these are our open gyms, so when we came back out of Covid, um, I had done a lot of research, um, with the help of the Recreation Department to kind of figure out what the people wanted, uh, and we did a survey and we were able to analyze that data to kind of get a gauge of what our active adults wanted, and for, for the most part, they wanted to get back in the gym, so these, these four sports, which is badminton, basketball, volleyball and pickleball, it was in high demand, um, as you know, the gym, there's two gyms at War Memorial, so we're able to offer quite a bit of open gym programming at this time. So you see the numbers underneath the registered players, now the registered players, let's just look at basketball. So there's six hundred and twenty-three registered players that, that are in what we call open gym basketball activity. Um, but since we, we were coming out of, back into program, out of lockdown, what we decided to do was we did a court reservation. So this was as a precaution for the safety, so people wanted to get back in the gym, but they, we wanted to get them back in the gym safely. So what we did was we basically told them, you could register, you could reserve the court, and you could bring your pod. So when we talk about, remember pods, was it like a year ago, two years, I don't even know when it was, yesterday? Um, so the pods is, it was the format that we went with, and we're currently still doing it. Um, with, if you look at the six hundred and twenty-three registered players, probably get about a hundred regularly, about, about sixty percent. So, um, I'm not saying that we have six hundred and twenty-three people in the gym, I'm saying on a weekly basis, we have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty players coming, uh, to participate in the program. Um, so the, the number one with the registered players is six hundred and twenty-three for basketball, but actually our volleyball is our most popular. Who knew, um, there's a lot of volleyball players that love volleyball, number one, but they also, um, love the War Memorial Community Center because the amount of courts that we have with the two gyms. So for volleyball, we run three courts per hour, um, and it is, it is extremely successful, um, within the three hundred and thirty-nine, I wanna say about the same amount, about a hundred of this, to the, a hundred per week, all different people. Um, but with the recent survey that just went out, um, the need to kind of get away from the pod method and go back to more of a drop-in method that they could pay per person, um, there's been a want for that. So hope, going into April, there's gonna be an option for both. So I'm gonna be, uh, moving forward with Brian to determine how many courts will be court reservations where they could bring their pods, and then how many courts will be a drop-in rate. Does anyone have any questions about the open gyms?
Okay, yeah, I do have a question, you, uh, mentioned that all your programs are, you guys are taking role, um, you guys are doing the same thing in the, uh, since everyone's coming in as registered players, you guys are taking attendance as well?
Yeah, so, um, as Denise said, I run after-school programs too, and with Covid, um, close contact and making sure that everyone was safe, and, and even within, you know, emergency situations, um, we wanted to make sure everyone was enrolled, and once they're enrolled, we have an iPad, so we just check them in, so if little, you know, Gina wants to come and play volleyball, they search their name and they, they have them, so I actually, actually, I could actually pull up, um, numbers that are current for the, so that's where I'm getting my numbers, these are the total amount, but I know how many are roughly coming in because attendance is being taken.
You think it'll be affected if you, once you guys switch to the drop-in payments?
I don't think, um, yeah, I don't think I'm gonna go fully to, um, drop-in. I think I wanna split it, uh, it'll be, it'll be a slow breakup with my pods, um, just because there's a lot of people, especially volleyball and basketball, they're athletes, and they have friends that are athletes, so to be able to rent a court and to bring your friends and to know that you're, you, you're playing with your friend and you know that you're at the same level, instead of getting, you know, Auntie Gina on the court with you, like, it's different, um, so I think it'll be a combination of both because there's a lot of people like myself, I don't have fourteen friends that I could bring to play basketball, right? So the, with the two gyms, there's a lot more flexibility to do both, and then reassess to see what's gonna work.
No, for sure, just curious, and thank you so much, that provides a lot.
Here's some sweet shots of our hoopers, now these are our young hoopers, and these are actually some of my, uh, I see an old staff in one of these. Um, so these are people that come to play basketball at the center, um, this is just basketball, um, but just wanted to show you some action shots. Uh, the adult enrichment, um, so enrichment, we're gonna do, the English as a Second Language is actually, we partnered with the Jefferson Adult Education, so they run the class, so they register through Jefferson Adult Education, and then they also register with us so we could take attendance. Um, so we have a beautiful teacher that comes in, and he's so nice, and we have a, uh, we usually have about twelve to fifteen students each day, and they do, they do, uh, English as a Second Language in the activity room is what we call it, which is the classroom side. The, uh, Cana Capila Jam is ukulele, a lot of aloha there, and that is the first Saturdays, and that actually came about is because they wanted to come back, and again, they wanted to do it in a safe way, and I believe that they're gonna try to extend from that first Saturdays to more of, um, a weekly or bi-weekly program, but they haven't, they haven't fully let us know. They will also be at the April twenty-third, um, event down at Dulter. And then the other one is intermediate guitar, and, and they are very talented, so intermediate is used lightly, I would say advanced. Um, the, it's a pleasure to be there on a Wednesday to listen to them, but that is also another free program, um, catered to our, our seniors or active adults. Sorry, I just jumped right into this, this is, it, so these are gonna go into three short videos of events. Um, I just wanna make sure I know what I'm, this one is gonna be the Veterans Day event, so as you can see, this is the corner of Mission Street, and if you know the city, that's out, um, so this will be a, a, a short little video recapping our Veterans Day event, and you'll be able to see, um, our partnering with the V F W, and then we'll also go into two other events. One's gonna be a turkey giveaway, which will automatically go to the video also, and then it'll go into our Memorial Day event. So that was one, and then the next one, oops. I'm sorry. We are at the War Memorial Community Center in Daly City, and we are handing out a hundred and fifty turkeys to the City of Daly City After-School Youth Recreation Program families. Hi, my name is Gina Meganini, and I am a Recreation Service Supervisor for the City of Daly City. This is our second annual.
Second annual turkey giveaway here at War Memorial.
Giving back to the community is first and foremost the most important thing we could do as a Recreation Department. Uh, our community is what drives our department, and we're here for them.
Hey, everybody, this is Geronimo Cerachino, the store manager here at Lucky's in Daly City. Today we're doing a turkey drive, Lucky's is committed to giving back to the community, and this holiday season, we donated over a hundred and fifty turkeys to help families in need, also with part of the promotion with the free turkeys, Lucky's is giving away seven-up, so you get a free turkey with seven-up, and those of you who had seven-up chickens, you could probably do a seven-up turkey, no, I'm just kidding.
Thanks to the police and Lucky's, California, for donating, we could do it again.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. I love that event, sorry, that's the second annual, and both of them are done in Covid, um, that's something that I did with my previous job, working in Sacramento, and Lucky's of California, and the Daly City, uh, Police League. and the Daly City Police League has agreed to continue it. So a hundred and fifty turkeys, a lot of them went to the After-School Youth Recreation Program, but a lot of them went to our War Memorial Community Center participants as well.
As we commemorate Memorial Day this very morning, remember those who sacrificed on the front lines for our freedom, for our liberty. So with gratitude and remembrance, we remember all of those that have fallen, and we will remember them forever.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to look at every veteran in the eye, and I just want to say thank you.
Never forget those who sacrificed for us as we stand on this land, as we stand in Daly City, where we can get up in the morning, we can, we can enjoy that freedom, where others have already lost their lives to this.
Thank you all for being here today on this somber day of reflection. We are here today to pay tribute to the men and women of Daly City who served in the United States Armed Forces, our neighbors, who have fought in defense of this country and for the preservation of our way of life.
Before us, these monuments representing the men and women of the City of Daly City who served in the United States Armed Forces, we honor them, we extend to them and to their memories our deepest respect.
So just to recap, I know you, watching a video like that and being there, very different. I was just reliving it because the, you know, if you've ever been to a Veterans Day or Memorial, they play taps, and the flag goes down, and it's very somber, but yet, you know, a celebration. And we're actually in the beginning stages of planning this year's Memorial Day event, which I'm sure you guys will all be invited to. And it'll be open to the public, and we're hoping to have a little, a little bit more this year, but again, still in the working stages. Does anyone have any questions about the events before me and Brian talk about job readiness? So this is a new program, Job Readiness Workshop. This came about because all of myself and, and my colleagues, we're hiring younger and younger, not, not because of any other reason, but, you know, it could be COVID, it could be education, people can't afford to live here and on the salaries that we have. It, it could also be that, you know, this job, and especially recreation, is geared towards people that are interested in being with youth, working with adults, and so we were tending to hire younger. So Brian and I decided we were going to try to train them before we hire them. This is the plan. And this is coming across also with our lifeguards. The lifeguards in the aquatics program do a lifeguard course, which hopefully, when they complete the lifeguard course, they get hired as a lifeguard. So I was like, well, why don't we do that for the other department, the other side of the department, which is the recreation, or part of the department, pardon me. So the teen internship program or Job Readiness Workshop is a course that trains teens how to get a job. So our idea is that, oh, sorry. Our idea is, I'm sorry. Give me one. My chewy order is here. Sorry. So the idea is to train them on all aspects of giving, getting a job, that's filling out an application, that's interpersonal skills, that is training them with the harassment training, how to act on a job, how to send an email, all that fun stuff. That's going to be the Job Readiness Workshop. And then from there, those who have completed that workshop successfully, which will be a rubric, they will be offered a teen internship program. So that teen internship program will be a paid internship, and those teens will be able to get placed throughout our department. So they complete the job readiness program in flying colors, right, hopefully? Fingers crossed. And then we place them in summer camps. We place them down at the Administration Department. We place them in a marketing, depending on their skills. So my colleagues and myself and Brian will be able to interview these kids and see their strengths, and then be able to offer them a paid internship in the summer, which is a six-week paid internship. And we have not done this here. We actually have a great teen program. This is in addition to it. And it's not publicized yet. You're the first to know. So this is a new program. It hasn't come out yet. Brian and I have set times to go to our supporting schools throughout the district. So, and outside of districts, so we're looking at South City, El Camino, Jefferson, Terranova, Oceano, Thornton, Westmore. Did I miss one? I think that's it. So we have plans, or we have reservations to meet with the leadership class to spread the word of this program. The program itself can hold up to fifty kids of the job readiness, and we have the capability to hire ten of the fifty if they completed the workshop successfully as a teen internship. Does anybody, oh, anybody have any questions regarding the Job Readiness Teen Workshop?
I, I actually have one. So you mentioned that, so there's, so since this is a new program, is this like the teen internship program for like the summer recreation, or is there like, I know you mentioned that there's another teen program that exists. They'll be like side by side?
This is going to be actually before summer even starts. So our high schoolers get out at the end of May, and we're, we're going to be into the early June, and Brian, you might have to refresh my memory, pardon me, on the exact date. But we actually will start before summer starts. And then when summer starts, there's summer camps or what they call explorers. So it's our middle school kids, they'll, they'll have an option. There'll also be an after-school teen program that will be an option. There's also a volunteer option. So this is just a smaller part to give them opportunities, number one, in our department, hopefully that they love it, and they'll stay with us, and they could, they could grow with us, and they could have a very flexible part-time job, or they just get the experience, and they could be able to go to their next job. But either way, looking at it on, when we were developing the curriculum and stuff, it's stuff that they kind of teach in school. Mind you, I haven't been in school in a while, but I know I wasn't taught it in school. So to be able to have the opportunity to get that paid internship at the end, I, I am hoping that it's going to be an incentive, but they definitely have other options other than this, this one program.
For sure, for sure. And then, you know, the, I've, I've worked with teens in the past. I know how it is. If one is like doing either like a similar job and one's getting paid and was not, we know, we know how that goes.
Yeah, and that's definitely more the volunteers will go into a lot of the summer camp support. These, the, hopefully, these teens that are selected will go into a more specialized intern, and, and that internship, it's not going to be forty hours a week. I mean, we're talking like ten hours tops.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So they're, they're going to get, they're, we're not putting a teen, like, their teen's not going to be with me all day because they would lose their mind. But it would be, they would be with somebody for two hours, and maybe the next time they come in, they could be in that same department with another person. So we're not putting more work or more stress on my, our colleagues, but we're also not, not giving them more opportunities, if that makes sense.
Got it, got it. Thank you so much.
Thanks. And that's all I have, unless there's any other questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. One more little tidbit before, commissioners, you will be learning more about our division specifically. We're trying to do it in a manner that it leads up to our programs, our special events and such. So Gina's, the teen internship with Gina and Brian, that kind of will transition. And then our next meeting, we'll discuss summer, the summer kind of aspect of things and the other teen aspects. And then we'll learn about classes and all that, just to give you more of an understanding of who we are and what we're about, and how we're going forward to try and come out of, you know, the COVID and what we're doing creatively, I should say. So, thank you again. And that ends our director's report.
Awesome. Thank you, Denise, and thank you, Gina and, and Brian, I believe. So moving on with the agenda, Commissioner's Report, do we have anything to report on this week? And just real quick, I know we do have a couple of new commissioners too, so like, it's definitely no pressure for this evening's meeting, but Commissioner's Report is here for if there's anything you seen in the community that you wanted to bring up as a topic, or anything that's related to the Parks and, Libraries and Recreation Department, specifically Recreation, this would be the space to do that. But if no one has anything to report right now, I do have a couple of questions since we're all here. We had a couple of community members last month report on a couple of things in regards to the, the Community Garden at Ceremonie Del Rey as well as the Westmore Park. Is there any like, I know that, I, I believe that's not under Recreation's jurisdiction, I would say, but maybe you could inform us a little more, Denise, or anybody here?
Hi, I'm happy to give you a little more information on those topics. They are school district property, so Westmore Park is not under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Division or the City of Daly City. And the Community Garden comments are around a large housing development that the Jefferson Union High School District is taking on, and the City Council granted preliminary approval to that project recently at a City Council meeting. So I can, I'm happy to send the link to that council meeting out to the commissioners if you'd like to view it.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, any information in regards to that as well, and I'm sure there's like a plan that was approved as well. So if that's, if you could include that in the email?
Sure.
Cool. Thank you, Stephen. Got it. All right. I'll leave it open for another couple of seconds. Anything else to report on? If not, we'll be moving on. Alrighty, moving on with the agenda this evening, we have announced and communications.
Thank you very much. So we have two upcoming events. We have our annual Spring Fun Day, which we're excited. We will be in person here at Westlake Park on April sixteenth, starting at nine AM. Join us for our annual Aconic. And there are multiple sessions that will be offered based on different age groups. We go TK, Kinder, first, second, third, all the way up through sixth grade, and there will also be a special visit from the Spring Bunny. We are doing, like Gina has said, and like we've said in previous meetings, a lot of, or everything that we do right now is done online with regard to registration. So everybody registers online, and that way we have a head count of who's going to be there and all of that kind of stuff, and we kind of gauge the amount of candy and items that we're going to need to have for everyone. So the registration online is through our iPlay system. The event is sponsored by the Daly City Host Lions, the Republic Services, and the City of Daly City. This event will also be supported by the Renaissance Business Center. So we're excited about that on April sixteenth. And then Gina alluded to this a few times. So we're doing Welcome Back to Programs Open House on Saturday, April twenty-third, from eleven to two. And this is Daly City Active Adult and Senior Programming. It's coming back. And so the entire Westlake Park is going to be just hopping with classes and demos and food and everything you can think of, and we're bringing all the seniors from the City of Daly City, because we want to make it not Doldr, not Lincoln, not War, not Geller, not Bayshore, but everybody coming together in one location, learning about different classes, different demonstrations. Every one of our rooms, every one of our spaces is going to be housed by different performers and, and such, and we're super excited to have everybody back, and please come and join us at that day and have a little hot dog or something, or dance a little bit. There, there's going to be a few demos from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley as well, so we're just trying to bring our seniors back and reminding them that we are here, even though they are housing themselves at the different locations that we spoke of. It's just get, bringing everybody in one location and kind of celebrating our return to, back to programs. Gina, you have anything you want to add to that? Did I hit every topic? Nah, good. It's down here at Westlake Park. Both of our loc, both of our events coming up are at Westlake Park. So you can register online again, and for more information, you can contact, our hotline is six five zero nine nine one eight zero one two. So that is all I have to report out. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Denise. Moving forward with the agenda this evening, we have a new item that we place onto the agenda that's going to be ongoing every meeting. I just kind of want to introduce it. It's agenda building, and it's creating a time and space at the end of every meeting. If there's any ongoing projects that you have or want to get started, this would be an opportunity to get that onto the next agenda. So I would like to open that up for anybody that wants to add anything for next month's agenda. This would be the time to do it. Alrighty, for myself, I have nothing to add for next month, so we'll just leave it on and keep it going. Other than that, moving forward with tonight's agenda, we have public comment.
So I will read this notice. So, "Public comment: In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the Recreation Commission is not authorized to speak or take action on any other items this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute." It is important, it is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the chair may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to active@dalyacity.org to be added to the record and shared with the Recreation Commission. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we will ask you to wrap up your comments. Speakers on compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately." So it looks, we have two callers, so we have call, in user, one will be the last caller to speak. So first up, we have Ms. Alana Wong.
Hi, good evening. I'm, I would love your agenda for next month option that you just introduced. I think that's fantastic, and I would like to suggest some agenda items. My main concerns for coming to Park and Rec Commission meetings have been for years. Um, my main concerns for coming to Park and Rec Commission meetings have been for years since the schools have been gated and locked, um, the children of Westlake community have nowhere to play basketball. Um, I know that it's a, it's a long-term solution, but my kids are growing up. It's past their time, but I'm worried about the rest of the kids that don't have a space to play. Um, they are not welcome to stay at school. There is no court in Westlake, and, um, they have nowhere to go, and it's unfortunate and sad. My other comment was that we've discussed, um, in the future, asked about getting a skate park built. Um, our kids are in desperate need of a skate park. I cannot count how many times I've driven van fulls of kids to the city and to Millbrae to play at their skate parks, and it's, um, really sad that, um, we don't have that option for them here. Um, I really appreciate all the hard work that everyone has put into getting, uh, programs started up for the adults, but the kids are in desperate need. They have suffered the most during the pandemic as far as la- lack of access to playing with their friends, and we need to do whatever we can to get them access to the Pacheli Gym after school so that they have somewhere that they're welcome to be and to play. It's unfortunate that nothing's going to happen until summer. I think that's it. I'm just, I'm really sad for my kids and for all the kids, and I hope that we can do something to help get these things established, um, because it's really desperately needed. I have one more comment. I have a question. My middle schooler has attempted to go to the basketball games at Pacheli Gym. He was admitted one time and denied twice, and I don't know why, and I think that's really unfortunate that kids want to go watch their teammates play and they can't. Or their schoolmates, excuse me, their classmates.
Thank you for your comment. Next up, we have our call-in user.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You're two minutes ahead.
Well, this is, this is actually my first meeting with the, with the Rec Commission. Uh, so, um, I'm actually a member of the public. I'm a private citizen, work in the private sector, but, um, there was an event, as you know, from last year, the War Memorial for the veterans, and, um, we were not invited. The public was not invited. And this is, again, keep in mind that the taxpayer, asking public pays for everything, and that there was a gentleman that mentioned something about the school district owning the property. Well, the taxpayer actually owns property, so I want to make sure that's clear. So the War Memorial, the mo- mo- I think it was Veterans Day or something, they had a, it, that, and we were told by the city clerk that no member of the public could attend, so really find that to be very bad because the taxpayer is actually paying for it. That's number one. Uh, number two, I do want to mention a, a group, a nonprofit group in the community. They're called Vibes and Smiles. They're nonprofit, I think there's, they're a five oh one C or something. So, um, if they ever need to rent property or need to use city resources, I would imagine that would be done at no ch- no charge. Again, keep in mind the taxpayer, taxpayer in public owns the property as well. Also, Geller Park, so I know there's a fee for soccer fields, baseball fields, and the clubhouse and the barbecue area, but there's no fees for the tennis court and basketball court. And I noticed that there's dogs allowed as well, so again, this doesn't come down on you guys, but there used to be no dogs allowed, and I'm not blaming the dogs, but maybe quite frankly about it, sometimes the owners are the, are the ones to blame for it. You, I think you know what I'm talking about. And then finally, um, I don't know if this really falls in your arena, but I think it's San Mateo Animal Control. So I do see a number of coyotes, you know, when, when we're out and about, and, um, just, you know, going around. So I guess I contact San Mateo County Animal Control if there's a dead nearby, don't want the kids to get hurt or something like that. And then, oh, last but not least, is the gardens. Um, so the garden is actually owned by the taxpayers. So the school district is funded by the taxpayers, the taxpayer in public, they fund it at the bottom.
And your two minutes are up, if you'd like to finish your comment.
That would be great if you guys could take some advice on that. Thanks.
And that is all public comment for tonight.
Alrighty, thank you to the community. Um, if that was the last public comment, um, if there's anything else commissioners you guys would like to say before we leave, if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Cool. So for Tuesday, March twenty-second, uh, I'd like to, to put this meeting adjourned.
Actually, a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, motion to, okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I motion to adjourn this meeting.
Awesome. Do we have a second?
I second.
Who, uh, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you, Denise, for catching that for me. Alrighty, I'll see you guys next month.
Have a great night, all. Thank you.
Bye.